Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone like to stand for the pledge? Joan, would you um, stand in front of the podium? At this time, I'd like to introduce Joan Horowanitz, retired Army veteran, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Joan served the United States Army for twenty-three and a half years in the Signals, Intelligence, and Electronics Warfare Division. Her tour of duty included Turkey, the Balkans, Germany, Italy, and our own great world, great country we live in, the United States. She retired as a Lieutenant Colonel. Her numerous medals include the Legion of Merit Defense Medal, Joint Service Commendation Medal, and the one she is most proud of, the Good Conduct Medal. Thank you for your service, Joan. The floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please remain standing? You know, Memorial Day is just around the corner. I'd just like to have a moment of silence for all of our servicemen and women that lost their lives. And also, I'd like to remember all of our law enforcement agents which have lost their lives. And their first defense against terrorism. And this week is National Peace Week, which is for all policemen, starting the fifteenth of May. So I'd like to keep all of them in our thoughts and prayers, all of our servicemen and women in our law enforcement, police that do a great job every day that lost their lives. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring this Wednesday, May seventeen, two thousand seventeen Board of Commissioners meeting to order, ten a.m. in the Commissioners' conference room. I'd like to make a motion for the approval, the reading in a minute. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, oh, excuse me, roll call.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay. Proclamation presentation. Just wondering if I could have Judge Thomas Munley, Vietnam veteran, to stand up to the podium? A couple of weeks ago, Judge Munley brought to my attention, and I've known this for a long time, that we have a veteran that's for veterans in this room today who works tirelessly in all different parts of being a veteran, from parades to helping them get their benefits, to everything, to Memorial Day, to services which really matter for the family, you know, the honor of putting a flag on the casket and handing it to a family member. This individual has done this. You know, he's retired, he's been out of the military for a while, but he is a veteran who cares about all of our veterans. And at this time, I'd just like to, Judge, let's talk about that. We're talking about our good friend Joe Sylvester, right?
Yes, Joe Sylvester is sitting right here in the front row. But I want to thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, you, Commissioner Cummings, and you, Commissioner O'Terriani, for what the three of you do for veterans. I spent my whole adult life working with veterans, and it's probably one of the most rewarding things I've ever done in my life. Joe Sylvester is the same as I am. He spends every single, you can't even call Joe Sylvester in the morning because he's at a funeral honoring a veteran who lost their life or passed away. He's, I know enough now to call Joe in the afternoon because I can't get him in the morning hours. He all, he goes to a hundred, Joe Sylvester, in all honesty, goes to a hundred and some funerals a year where he, to honor fallen vets.
A lot of funerals.
That's a lot of funerals, a year. That's amazing when you think of it. So a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner O'Malley, I was thinking, I said, you know, Joe Sylvester, I mean, he's the man around here who wants to do everything he can to help veterans. He helps me every day. I call him constantly, Joe, what can we do to help this person? What can we do to help that person? And he's always there for me, no matter what I have to do. He's always, he always says to me, let's make sure we get this done. We have a parade Saturday coming up, I'm the grand marshal parade, where we're afraid that nobody's going to show up because nobody really shows up for the veterans' parade. Joe and I are working on that every day to try to get some people to show up for the veterans' parade. It's an honorable thing. And again, Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Terriani, you, the three of you are so good at helping vets, it's something we'll never forget. But Joe Sylvester, I'm even proud to be in the same room with you. And I want to say that in all honesty. So Commissioner O'Malley, you did this with, you know, and everybody with Andy Wallace helping us. So thank you so much. I recommended that this be done, and you did it. And to me, that's an amazing thing. Thank you very much.
Joe, you'd like to step up to the podium?
Joe. All right, let me sit down.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings?
Any day that we have the opportunity to recognize our veterans, I applaud that and appreciate it. So I thank Judge Munley for sending this request in, for giving us the opportunity to honor someone who is so deserving of the achievement. So thank you so much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Joe. Commissioner O'Terriani?
Joe, you're an old friend. I know your history pretty well, your experiences. It's great to see you here. I'm glad to be a part of this too. And thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Joe, on behalf of all the veterans, thank you for what you do for all of us in Lackawanna County. You really do a great job. And anyone who would like to come out and see Joe, Joe will be at the memorial service this coming Monday, Memorial Day, at the Kaiser Valley Community Center, eleven o'clock start.
Memorial Day?
Memorial.
Not this coming?
Next, I'm sorry, the twentieth. But Joe is always there, you know, I mean, it's from parades to just helping veterans outright. And this has been going on from when, while he was in the reserves up until now, and he's never stopped. And the proclamation actually says the whole story, there's a lot, but there's a lot that I know that's not even here. You couldn't fit it on a proclamation. It would take ten proclamations to put everything in. But this is just a, this just cuts the surface of it. Whereas Joe Sylvester, a veteran for all veterans, this is fact, is being recognized today for his dedication and his commitment to those who have served, served in Lackawanna County. He has served the United States Army on active reserve duty for forty-three years, that's a long time, achieving the rank of E-8. Joe was offered a direct commission. I mean, most people would jump on that, but he declined. He opted to stay with his unit. Joe has a thousand parachute jumps, many of which were special orders with the Fifth Special Forces Parachute Team. He has done numerous parachute jumps for charities, including the Jerry Luce Labor Day Telethon. Whereas Joe is a member of twenty-two military organizations, which he is the commander or officer of twelve of all, all of them are all voluntary. He has been instrumental in organizing many activities at the Geno Merly Center and the Veterans Hospital in Wilkes-Barre. He is a charter member of the Armed Forces Day Parade, and Joe has worked for schools and allied services, senior centers, to organize military displays and ceremonies. He has contributed to Memorial Day, Flag Day, Veterans' Day, as well as Easter and Christmas parties. He's always willing to assist his fellow veterans in any question, or fellow man. He's always there for everybody, he's just a great guy. Whereas he has formed an Honor Guard for ceremonies for funerals which are instrumental in getting the Honor Guard certified by the U.S. Navy, which I know that wasn't easy to have done. Joe is chairman of both the Victory Committee and the Armed Forces Committee. Now therefore, we, Patrick M. O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, and Lorene Cummings, Commissioner of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim and acknowledge, May seventeen, two thousand seventeen, on behalf of the two hundred fourteen thousand citizens and Joe Sylvester Day in Lackawanna County, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Thank you.
And Judge Tom Munley, thank you for bringing this forward. Would you like to come forward? Come on, Judge.
Take your time. Okay. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Get ready in the middle, Joe. Get ready in the middle, Joe.
All right, here we go, guys. One, two, three, two, three, all smiles, one, two, three. Joe, your best smile.
I'll break the camera. I thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank all of our veterans in the viewing audience, and just everyone, remember, Memorial Day is just around the corner. Please come out and honor those who gave so much for our country. Joe, thank you very much, and thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Seventeen dash zero one four nine. This is Dr. Michael D. Michel. He's a PhD and professor of historian, history at the University of Scranton. And, you know, we have at least two students in this room that, that the doctor actually taught through the years, and one was our Chief of Staff, Andy Wallace, and our Solicitor, Don Fredrickson.
My Solicitor.
Oh, and John Sayer, okay, and John Sayer. All right. So at this time, I'd like for Don Fredrickson to read this proclamation because he actually brought this forward, and, you know, a teacher, a professor, I mean, there's just such an impact on your life. And Don made sure to bring this forward that he has fifty years in being a professor at the University of Scranton and the lives that he's impacted. So I'd like for one of his students to actually read the proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioners. I found out earlier this year, I was a student of the Dr. D. Michel's a few years ago, just a few, and I found out today that myself, Andy Wallace, John Sayer, and Frank Castellano, our court administrator, also was a student of Dr. D. Michel's, and four of our sitting judges are also former students of Dr. D. Michel. So he's had a tremendous impact on Lackawanna County. And I found out earlier this year that he's celebrating his fiftieth year teaching, and he's retiring, he's phasing out next year. So we have contacted him about this. He said, oh, I'm not retiring till next year. And I said, well, Doctor, I said, people retire every day, but not everybody teaches for fifty years. We wanted to come in and recognize him for a career that's dedicated to education here in Scranton and the impact that he's had on a lot of students in Lackawanna County. So we have a proclamation here today for you, Doctor. Whereas Dr. Michael D. D. Michel, a professor of history and international studies program advisor in the Department of History at the University of Scranton, is being recognized for his fifty years of service with the university and his upcoming retirement. And whereas, a graduate of the University of Scranton and the Pennsylvania State University, Dr. D. Michel has received numerous awards, including the Alpha Sigma New Award for Teaching Excellence, the University's President's Award for Outstanding Teaching, the Sears Roebuck National Award for Outstanding Teaching and Campus Leadership, the First Case Professor of the Year, and was chosen by the class of two thousand four as the University Professor of the Year. He is the first recipient of the Campion Award, given to someone who contributed to the university's purpose as a Catholic and Jesuit institution. And whereas, Dr. D. Michel recently received the Provost's Award for Outstanding Service and Leadership. He is listed in Who's Who in America and in Education, the Journal of American Scholars, and the Dictionary of International Biography. His articles appear in Social Studies, the American Benedictine Review, and Pennsylvania History. He has published a book entitled, The Italian Experience in America: A Pictorial History. And whereas, he and his wife, Rose Marie, are the parents of Michael, Christine, and Jacqueline, they are the proud grandparents of six grandchildren. Now therefore, we, Patrick M. O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, and Lorene Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, they hereby acknowledge and proclaim today, May seventeen, two thousand seventeen, as Dr. Michael D. D. Michel Day in Lackawanna County. Doctor, congratulations.
Donald, thank you very, very much. I want to thank Commissioner O'Terriani, O'Malley, and Cummings as well for this honor. I'm humbled that I'm sharing it really with Joe Sylvester, marvelous veteran and all the things that he does here. I know he's left a few minutes ago. It's been a marvelous ride at the university, fifty years. It seems like a flash, it seems like yesterday. But I've had, in those fifty years, ten to twelve thousand students, including many of them here. I feel very much at home here in Lackawanna County, with several here in this room today. As Don mentioned, four of the sitting judges, and one of my former students, Jean Talarico, had just won the primary here for District Attorney. I've had a pleasure too of, how should I say, helping to shape some of the lives of people. I hope I certainly have not done any harm in that particular time. But one of the things I did most recently, and this is somewhat gratifying to myself, and I, one of the most enjoyable things that I've done in my life besides marrying my wife for fifty-four years, Rosemary, and getting my doctorate and my teaching career, is I endowed a scholarship. And the scholarship, I put so much down to endow the scholarship, but then they suggested I give out to my former students. And not only did we have collected tremendous amount of money that will start the scholarship in nineteen, rather, in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, the first year we offer for a history, political science, or international studies major, but the marvelous letters and cards that I received back, and emails from all those students. So that's one of the most gratifying things that I've had. I am phasing out. These days in college campuses, we phase. An old soldier said, old soldiers never die. You remember General MacArthur, they just fade away? Well, old teachers never die, they just phase out these days. So thank you very, very much, okay?
Professor, stay right there. Professor. Lorene, do you want?
Professor, I'd like to congratulate you on your work, and my solicitor is one of your students, attorney John Sayer.
Yes.
And I appreciate the work that you've done with all of the judges, and Don Fredrickson, and Andy Wallace. So we can acknowledge that you're responsible for much of the items and agendas that pass throughout our county.
Only this good.
Yes. And in this administration, you've got many that are working from what you've taught, and I'm proud to work with them and very proud of their work, and thank you for the service you've done for fifty years.
Okay. Commissioner O'Terriani?
I too would like to thank you, and I wish our son was, he's in his first year at Temple Law, I wish he was lucky enough to have had you as a teacher. You did a great job with most of your students here. Keyword being most, okay? And thank you very much.
Dr. D. Impact, twelve thousand students, their families, you probably, you've probably had some of their children. It's amazing.
No grandchildren yet.
Yeah, no grandchildren, but they're children.
That's when I know I should have retired.
That's where you get now next year, so you don't have to see the grandchildren. But it really matters, and the impact that the community's been immense, and we'd just like to thank you on behalf of the two hundred fourteen thousand citizens. Congratulations, it's your day. I'd like to have Don Fredrickson, your wife, come on up, attorney Sayer, and our Chief of Staff.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Come on, Don, you're the one presenting. Congratulations.
I know, I know. I knew that right off the bat, yeah.
Hey, this is what you're, you're a real professor, you gotta do this one.
All smiles, one, two, three, one, two, three, one more, all smiles, one, two, and three. Perfect.
Thank you, folks. You too. This is for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Take care now. Nice to meet you. Thank you, sir. You go. Yeah, absolutely. It was a pleasure. Absolutely.
Very nice to see what an impact one person could have on so many, so many students. Thank you, Doctor. Okay, Lorene, it's your seventeen dash zero one five zero, Small Business Spotlight.
Slocum's Market, George Slocum is here, I believe.
George, come on up to the podium.
Hi, Mr. Slocum, can you tell us a little bit about your business?
It's a small grocery deli in Dalton, Pennsylvania. It's been there, I couldn't tell you how many years. The original people that I knew started it back in the seventies. And this last year, this year, the person I was renting the store to left me, and I opened it up out of a whim, just with, I guess nothing else to do. So I've been there five months, we've brought people back into the store, and we're still offering the same that we did. We have a butcher that butchers fresh every day.
Matters.
Nice.
We have sandwiches for noon, lunch, and so forth, and that's about it.
And you're located on West Main Street in Dalton?
Yeah, West Main Street in Dalton.
Right in the heart of Dalton.
Well, now we're the only store from Clark Summit to Binghamton, really. All the rest of them have closed, Ray's Market's closed.
Yeah, that closed just recently, about three months ago.
February twenty-eighth, yeah, that closed. So we're basically one of the only stores left open in the area.
You're convenient for them, too, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. We open seven days, and...
And what were you doing prior to that?
I was in maintenance and construction all my life. I had no idea about a grocery store.
And you owned the building too, right?
I owned the building, yeah. And that was one of the reasons I went in, was because I needed that to help pay the mortgage. I do have four apartments upstairs that have been rented since I've owned it, and, but I just needed to have the building. It's been in the town for so many years, and so many people that I've known have asked if, you know, make sure it never closed, and so far, we're trying to do that.
You took up the bouncer to do that, and just, you know, I love hearing the stories of why businesses are currently open and running, and there's always some unique reason for it. And you're carrying on a store that actually, like you're saying, is in an area where there's nothing for miles after that. So I don't know the family that owned it prior to you taking over, but I appreciate that you're keeping what seems to be a landmark, a landmark store, or area that you need a store, open for the citizens that are surrounding you. So thank you for your initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you for your courage, and good luck, and feel free to come back and see us again, and if you ever need anything that we can help you with, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No, George, we had a very nice conversation for quite a long time, and great job, and I'm sure you'll do very well and keep going well.
We'll try. Thank you. Thank you.
George, I was reading about you in the Yavington News, and I know, I know the Main Street in Dalton, you know, I mean, you have the, you have the corner store, you have your corner store, you got the fire department, you got the library, you have the park there, you've got McGrath's Pub, I mean, that's the main street right there. That's it. And this brings so much to Main Street. You know, being able to have a corner store there where people can go on just, just for convenience, and you just named it. That's a great distance between going to a supermarket, and for all the people in Dalton, I'm sure some of them, that might be, that's where they might just do all their shopping.
Right.
So you really provide something that matters to the people of Dalton. And we just wanted to have you come in because your store is absolutely right in the heart of Dalton. And if it had closed, that would add a huge impact on the people of Dalton. And especially with Ray's closing recently, you know, that was, that took a lot of people that had to, they have to travel far, either to Tuncaanic or into Clark Summit to go shopping. And you hired more people, you've got your, you've got your own butcher, so everything's fresh. You'll have people that'll just be stopping just because, because of that. Because you're not getting that today. I mean, this is a small-town store with people who care. And the world is different, and it's good to keep Main Street, USA alive, and you're a part of that.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to thank you and your family, and definitely be stopping for a hoagie when I stop at the library.
We'll be there.
Definitely will at the fire station.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Certificate of Recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Slocum's Market in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given the seventeenth day of May, two thousand seventeen, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Lorene Cummings. Come on up, George.
It's another pleasure. So much for stepping up and doing, that's wonderful, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, George. Thank you. George, we'll all be up to, we'll be up to see your store soon. I've been there past, but we'll be up again. No, we're buying, we want to keep it going. Thank you, George. Seventeen dash zero one, zero one five one, National Police Week Certificate Presentation. Can I have Chief Salerno, and he's also the Vice Chief of the Chiefs Association, and Scranton PD's own Chief Graziano, come on up to the podium. I don't think Sheriff McAndrew was, Sheriff McAndrew here?
He's in court.
I had an opportunity to stop, I think Commissioner O'Terriani did too, to stop over at the memorial service that you had on the fifteenth, which is actually the beginning of National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And it was a beautiful service, and I saw the Wilding family there, you know, that's heavy heart for all of us, especially the family, and you did such a fabulous job. And I truly mean it, like, when we talk about the first line of defense against terrorism and stuff, it really is, like, both of you have been around long enough to understand the difference between a police officer prior to two thousand, September eleventh, two thousand one, and the day after. It's so different, and you do so much more, and a lot of times, it's with so much less, and you make it happen. So we wanted to have you come in because in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth, the, May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week, which starts on May fifteenth, and is a National Police Week, so going forward. Thank you for what you do. Like to say a few words?
I would just like to thank the current panel of Commissioners of Lackawanna County. We, as the Chiefs Association and police officers across this county, have never had the support that we have right now. I truly thank you from the bottom of my heart that you have been supporting the Chiefs Association, Lackawanna County SWAT team, and police officers all across this county as you have been since you've taken office. Thank you very much to all of you.
Chief?
I'll just echo what Chief Salerno said, and we appreciate the support, as, you know, I say, whenever I go to crime patrol, it's so much more than arresting people.
It is, it's so much.
Responding to calls, it takes a community to help a community and to make a community better, and everyone's got to work together, and that's what we're doing here for a change, and we appreciate that.
You said it best, your service, that's how you said it. It's about the community being together on the same page with the police department to make it work, it really does. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, I thank both of you for your, for your service, and for all of our police officers and law enforcement. I think it's about time that we're showing our officers the respect that they fully deserve, not only here in Lackawanna County, but throughout our country. And I'm so proud to have you both here to represent those that serve with you and alongside of you. You're our protectors, and our, our kids need to start looking up to our officers as they did when I was a young girl, and I'm hoping that the small things that we do here help to provide that respect and encouragement to all of you and your staff and anybody that you're working with. So thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart for protecting us and keeping us safe. I really do appreciate it, and, you know, especially proud of Carl, as we're, we grew up together, so, you know, I'm so proud of you, and love watching, watching you and seeing where you've gone from a young man to what you've become today. Yeah, thank you, Carl.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Just to thank both of you again for your support, but it makes it easier for government to interact and to work together with each other when they have leaders as yourself running your departments and communicating your needs and wants, the things that we can be helpful with. You guys are the reason that we've been able to be more helpful. It's not because of us, it's because of you. You guys did a great job doing that, communicating your needs. We're just glad to be here and be able to do, that's what we're supposed to do. You guys do a great...
enforcement. I think it's about time that we're showing our officers the respect that they fully deserve, not only here in Lackawanna County, but throughout our country. And I'm so proud to have you both here to represent those that serve with you and alongside of you. You're our protectors, and our kids need to start looking up to our officers as they did when I was a young girl. And I'm hoping that the small things that we do here help to provide that respect and encouragement to all of you and your staff and anybody that you're working with. So, thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart for protecting us and keeping us safe. I really do appreciate it. And, you know, especially proud of Carl as we're, we grew up together, so, you know, I'm so proud of you. And love watching you and seeing where you've gone from a young man to what you've become today. Yeah, thank you, Carl.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Just to thank both of you again for your support, but it makes it easier for government to interact and to work together with each other when they have leaders as yourself running your departments and communicating your needs and wants, the things that we can be helpful with. You guys are the reason that we've been able to be more helpful. It's not because of us, it's because of you. You guys did a great job doing that, communicating your needs. We're just glad to be here and be able to do that. That's what we're supposed to do. You guys do a great job in what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say much, say enough about the police association, the chiefs we have in Lackawanna County. Our municipalities are well-protected, and we're always looking for grants and money to always make it better. And we're also, right now, all of us are looking at better technology to make it easier and to protect our police officers when they have to go do stuff that no other citizen would ever want to do, ever, in their lives. But they go and do it to make sure that we're safe at home with our children, to raise them, you know, and move forward. And that's what your job is about. It's about protecting and serving. And the community really appreciates everything that all of our chiefs and all of our policemen do and what both of you do every day. We also have a certificate for the Sheriff, Mark McAndrew. They actually lost a deputy back in the early 1900s, so I just want to acknowledge that the sheriff is actually in court today, couldn't make it. This certificate is of recognition of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the Police Chiefs Association of Lackawanna County for National Police Week in everyday service, given the 17th day, May of 2017, by Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, and Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of Lackawanna. On behalf of the 214,000 citizens, thank you for what you do every day. And to the viewing audience, today is, this week is to remember those that lost their lives. Remember those that are out there doing the job every day because they're out there protecting us. And you know what? Go up and thank them for what they do. Because it's good when you have a police officer in a vicinity of where you're at. You feel safer, you feel better, and you understand if something goes wrong, that they're going to protect the citizens at hand. So, please, when you see a police officer, thank them for what they do every day. It's not an easy job. Would you guys like to come forward?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Are you in the middle, Mike? Sorry. I just hear you in the middle. There's some big guys here.
Here we go next. One, two, three. Two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Great.
The ceremony was really nice. Thank you. Thanks, chiefs. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Resolutions seventeen dash zero one four one.
Proven current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables from the Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 242-831 to 243-712 inclusive, totaling $4,777,063.36. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $4,198,641.75. And Deputy Director Jermaine Holcosky is here if there are any questions from the Board of Commissioners.
Everything good, Jermaine?
All invoices were reviewed, audited, and approved prior to payment.
Beautiful. Board have any questions for Jermaine? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you. Seventeen dash zero one three eight.
This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, establishing a residency requirement for all management and non-union employees of Lackawanna County. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, whereas in order to fulfill its functions and obligations as a county, Lackawanna County employs a significant number of personnel, whereas the Board of Commissioners have the authority to adopt a personnel code pursuant to the statute L 302 of the Pennsylvania and Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter, whereas the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners believes it is in the best interest of Lackawanna County to require that its management and non-unionized employees be required to reside within the county limits. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve the following. One, all newly hired full-time management and non-union employees must reside within the geographic boundaries of Lackawanna County as a condition of employment. Two, any newly hired management or non-union employee who does not reside within the county at their time of hire shall relocate and have a permanent address within the geographic boundary of Lackawanna County within six months of their date of hire. Three, all current management and non-union employees of Lackawanna County who do not currently reside within the geographic boundaries of Lackawanna County shall be exempt from the provision of this resolution. Four, this resolution shall act as an amendment to the Lackawanna County Non-Union Personnel Code and the Deputy Director Personnel Code. Five, all resolutions or parts of resolutions inconsistent with this shall be and hereby are repealed. Six, if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this resolution shall be declared invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this resolution, which shall and will remain in full force and effect.
Ladies and gentlemen, this, I actually ran on this. This was part of my platform in 2011. We have approximately, of our 1,070-some employees, we have approximately 50 that live, 50-some that live outside of our county. And this isn't to hurt them, I mean, they're grandfathered in. But from here forward, at least with our non-union and our administration, this is a first part of moving forward as a resolution that everyone that we invest in, like, when we hire people, we're investing in our employees to work on behalf of Lackawanna County. You know, why shouldn't we have all of our employees living inside of Lackawanna County? If you can't find somewhere good to live inside of Lackawanna County, you shouldn't be here. But so here forward, I just believe that this would just be a great opportunity. One, to broaden our tax base. Two, to show that our investment isn't just a pay check to an employee, but an investment into the community that they live in and they work in and they play in. So, I brought this up at least twice, and one time, we'd actually died by lack of a second. So, at this time, I'm just very happy to be here today, that we're going to hopefully vote this through and it'll be reinforced, you know. Most surrounding counties don't have a residency. Wyoming, Wayne, Luzerne County does, but it's more like towards their managers and directors. You know, ours is for the non-union. But I implore all of our unions to adopt this residency policy and work on behalf of the 200, it really works on behalf of the 214,000 citizens. And like I said, you know, I mean, I think Lackawanna County is a great place to live. And I think if you're, if you get employed here after today, you absolutely should live here in Lackawanna County. So, at this time, I'd like to, Commissioner Cummings, will you have to add anything?
I think our boards and authorities should, all their members should be included in that as well. Although I think they have policies on that already.
We have to, that's, yeah, that's a different one. This is just the first phase of it.
Yep.
The big thing would be for the, hopefully, the unions would adopt it, so that would be the next thing. So, eventually, hopefully, it would be something in place for all of our employees for the future. Commissioner O'Terriani?
I make a motion, we accept this resolution.
I thought he made the motion.
Is that?
Didn't he make the motion?
No, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. I'd like to thank my fellow Board of Commissioners here for voting this in affirmative. This really matters to the people of Lackawanna County. And like I said, it's not just about broadening the tax base, it's about our investment, our employees, and them investing back into Lackawanna County. So, thank you very much for your support. Okay, seventeen dash zero, oh, do you want to, I think our judge is here?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to bring him?
Resolution seventeen dash oh one three nine, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an option agreement with Rika Holdings LLC in the amount of $10,000 for an option to purchase a property at 1360 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania by October 31st, 2017. And President Judge Michael Beres is here to explain the agreement and answer any questions from the board on the proposed purchase and what we would be doing with the building.
Commissioners, good morning. As you know, we have met several times. The court has met with various agencies within the criminal justice system, including the district attorneys, the public defenders, the sheriff's department, the probation department, as well as the prison, in regard to an issue that's concerned, number one, safety, and second of all, savings. And that is that the present setup of the central court and the courthouse is a very, somewhat dangerous and volatile situation, that we have defendants there next to their victims. We don't have a secure area in which to protect them. We also have to spend a great deal of money on transporting prisoners down from the prison on a daily basis. And because of the coding system, often, they have to be returned, hearings aren't held, and it really wastes a great deal of not only judicial time, but also importantly for the county is the savings or the cost of transporting these people on a daily basis. The new building, which is right next to the prison, would allow for those hearings to be held and actually, the attorneys to be going out there to have a permanent place for the central court, which would have secure facilities for the victims as well as the defendants. And also, we would no longer have to transport defendants on a daily basis down to the courthouse. We also can hold other proceedings there, such as gagging hearings, which the judges would actually go out there for the hearings, instead of bringing down 20 or 30 per day for gagging hearings. And finally, the savings would also involve the processing center. We have a processing center within the courthouse presently, and we also have a second one out at the prison, which means that a person would be processed both here originally at an arraignment, and then taken out to the prison where they then, for their own purposes, have to process the prisoner again. So, with the purchase of this building and the placing of central court and the processing center out there, I believe would help not only the pragmatic infrastructure of central court, but more importantly, provide security and savings to the county.
Thank you, Judge.
Additionally, Commissioners, just to let you know, and to add on what the judge was saying, this is an option agreement. This gives us a period until October 2017 to close on this deal. There's a lot of coordination.
First to vet the building.
Correct. This is securing the building for us until October, and that'll give us time to look into it for zoning issues, to make sure we're allowed to zone it. We're going to have to coordinate with Harrisburg, with the AOPC, because there's going to be court facilities and our judge, so we've got to make sure that they approve it and any other tests or studies we need to do on the building in the meantime.
This is to make sure that it fits all of our needs.
That's correct.
And the truth that matters, so the viewing audience understands, the Lackawanna County Prison is completely and utterly landlocked. And as a former corrections officer, I understand that this would absolutely give us a more secure environment for any kind of court proceedings. They wouldn't actually be leaving the prison, they would actually just be going to another section of the prison. They would never lose the train of custody, so they'd still be in custody of the Lackawanna County Prison even as they went into some kind of hearing or event that would go on. So, I feel this could be a great opportunity if everything works out between zoning and the facility itself, Judge.
Any questions?
Questions? Okay.
I have some commentary after.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into the option agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'm going to abstain.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley? Yes.
On the question?
On the question.
On the question, I have a statement. Judge, I appreciate the work that you've done on this, and I understand completely why you're looking for this to happen. I've been to central court, I looked at it, and I realize there is issues there that need to be addressed, and this could potentially be a good idea. With that, I do have a statement that I'd like to read for the record. We've had numerous meetings on the subject of acquiring a structure adjacent to Lackawanna County Prison for the relocation of central court. I fully understand the security and other concerns that have been discussed at length. In addition, while the Commissioners have been advised that this move will have substantial cost savings, no independent or in-house study has been provided to me to date to confirm whether cost savings will, over the long run, justify the expenditure for acquisition and rehabilitation to make the proposed site suitable for our purposes. However, I am at this time greatly concerned with the impact on the taxpayers of Lackawanna County of the state budget, which I've spoken on numerous occasions. Pennsylvania has a $3 million shortfall from last year's budget. C cap, which represents the interest of all counties, and the state has recently cautioned Commissioners across the Commonwealth to plan for shortfalls in state funding due to the fiscal debacle, which continues at the state level. Lackawanna County is in the process of centralizing our government at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. While we have taken into account many contingencies in the financing that was obtained, the future is impossible to predict. Without a better understanding of construction completion and any possible cost overruns or enhancements, I believe it's wise to exercise fiscal restraint until this important project, which we committed to, is substantially completed. While I'm not opposed to the concept of relocating central court to save costs, I believe that the combination of the financial situation at the state level and the uncertainty about the savings of the proposed project and the cost of completion of the project currently underway require me to abstain from voting for this project at this time. Obviously, as more information about the finances of the county becomes, comes forward, we will be in a better position to assess financially the proposed project. I could further certainly support this in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Judge, thanks for coming in. Okay, seventeen dash zero one four zero.
Authorizing submission of a grant with the Department of Community and Economic Development. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting public interest in economic development, whereas Lackawanna County supports local efforts that improve the quality of life by improving access to reliable, safe, affordable, multimodal transportation, whereas Lackawanna County desires to partner with Luzerne County to jointly pursue funding via Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program grant application with Department of Community and Development, whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorize the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board to sign all documents related to the application for this Greenways, Trails, and Rec program. Now, therefore, be it resolved the 17th day of May 2017, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorizes submission of this grant application in the amount of $150,000 for calendar year 2017 with co-applicant Luzerne County and Mr. George Kelly, Director of our Economic and Community Development Office, is here to answer any questions Commissioners might have on this resolution.
Good morning, Mr. Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. This grant is very similar to a grant that I presented to the Board of Commissioners two meetings ago to approve for a bike study. Some of the concerns that were voiced was, it was a lot of money for a bike study, and there was a lot of money that would come out of our general fund to actually make this happen. And I committed to look for more cost-efficient ways, efficient ways of achieving the same results without a burden to the general fund.
Can this get us another cartoon, you think?
Well, we're batting two already on this one, so.
Okay, just wondering.
It depends on today again. But the bottom line with this one is, the last grant had a 50% match, and we'd have to come up with over $37,000 to the study. And it is a large amount, and it's something that, you know, we discussed in detail. With this grant, since it's Greenways, Greenways and Trails, there's only a 15% match. So, what that does is reduce the contribution that we have to make to $11,250. And then, when we use staff services as our contribution in kind, that reduces the impact to the general fund down to $3,750. So, it's taking zero off our total match of what we had to do with the last grant. Now, we're going to keep both grants in to see if we can get both awarded. And of course, we will choose this one, and I'll come back to the Board of Commissioners to choose this one if we do get awarded this bike study grant.
Board have any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Yes. So, what happens if we get both grants?
The Board of Commissioners would choose which one that they'd like to accept. I would recommend that we use this one, since there's only a 15% match and it does the same exact thing as the prior application.
So, it's still the $150,000 grant?
Yes, it is.
So, the state, in essence, would be providing the $150,000 grant, and we're...
Less our little match for that, and it's part of the program that has been funded. And again, as we've always discussed with different type of grants, I usually aggressively go after grants for Lackawanna County because this money will be given to another county if we don't get it. So, I like to see it spent here and invested here, then in Allegheny or Pittsburgh. So I like to see it spent here and invested here than in Allegheny or Pittsburgh.
Okay, so it's money that was already... What did you just say? It was money?
This is money that has been budgeted as part of DCED, Harrisburg, for Greenways, Trails, Recreation.
Okay. Okay, so, George, where did the amount of the one hundred and fifty thousand come from? How do you know that's how much it's going to cost to begin with to do this study?
What we did is we relied upon estimates from our NPO, or Metropolitan Planning Organization of PennDOT, and the group felt that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be sufficient enough to cover the full bike study and bike arrangements for Luzerne County and for Lackawanna County focused in Wilkes-Barre and Scranton.
What exactly does a bike study entail?
It would be actually mapping out the routes, the capabilities, the issues that may present itself in terms of having a bike lane, such as sewer, caps, safety issues, accessibility, identifying the major points of interest or places of importance to tie together. It's looking at trying to tie different areas, housing projects, or now developments, universities, schools, government offices to our intermodal center, multimodal center, to allow access to a broad range of people.
This is all downtown.
It's focused on downtown.
There's a lot to it, but I mean, it's all the different... Every block downtown would have a bike lane, basically, we're talking about.
Not every block, but there'll be...
Like towards the courthouse, by the main...
Majority of those, from the major buildings, major services.
And would they have to reconstruct the sidewalks, or what exactly are they going to do?
That's what the study would actually determine. I don't anticipate seeing sidewalk reconstruction. There are a couple of areas... What I did is we have transportation planners on our team as part of economic development and planning. They actually walk the major points of downtown to the intermodal center, multimodal center, to determine what are the major impediments that we have right now, and can we put something in, in a very inexpensive manner. But as they walk through, they realize we did have some challenges. The five hundred block of Lackawanna Avenue with that Central Island with the really nice clock and crosswalks, that presents us with a challenge in getting that part of Scranton over. And that's why they felt that they'd rather bring in a consultant that specialized in this type of work to help us determine the safest and best ways to provide accessibility.
And who gets paid on this? Who gets paid to do this study? Who would be doing it?
We would do a request for services, an RFP, that would be run through our department since we're the lead. And we'd go out for services and see what would come in in terms of the most beneficial, and it'd be ourselves and Luzerne County, the team from Luzerne County that does transportation planning, to do a recommendation, and then we'd look for approval, first to accept the grant, secondly is then to award the contracts through the Board of Commissioners.
So then, you would... You and someone from Luzerne County from, I'm assuming, their... One of their programs would decide on the committee? The people that are serving on the committee?
There'd be about six of us that would actually get together. There's three from Luzerne, three from Lackawanna. We would also present that to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the NPO organization that gives the direction to PennDOT and federal highways in terms of how our money is spent.
Okay, and then that committee itself would decide on who's going to do the work, right?
Yes. We would look for a best price, best capabilities firm, as we do with all our bidded work, and we'd make that recommendation to engage into that contract.
What if it doesn't cost one hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
We would not spend it then.
And where would that money go?
That would be returned or not taken down from the program, the Greenways and Trails Program. That'd be made available for other recipients.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oteriani?
No, I've discussed this with Mr. Kelly in the past. I'm well aware of what it is, and I'm in favor of it.
Well, nobody's saying they don't know what it is, Jerry.
I'd like to make a motion, authorizing submission grant for the Department of Community and Economic Development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
On the question, I'll have more to say on my commentary, so.
Okay, seventeen dash zero one four two?
I'm sorry, did Commissioner Cummins want me to stop?
No, I just said at the end, under Commissioners' office.
I apologize, I just wanted to make sure you didn't want me to stop. Seventeen dash zero one four two, entering into a cooperative agreement with Mayfield Borough. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna hereby authorize into a cooperative agreement with the Borough of Mayfield for the Maple Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following community development block grant construction grant for the Borough of Mayfield for general construction to Rock Bottom Construction LLC, German Road, German, Pennsylvania, the lowest and most responsible qualified bidder, for an amount not to exceed fifty nine thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And I believe Mr. Kelly is here also to explain this agreement. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Chief Wallace. Community development block grant funds flow from the government, federal government, state, to the county. It's our responsibility to administer those funds. Mayfield has selected a project to do stormwater separation, and the funds will flow through us for the benefit of the residents of Mayfield.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Kelly? Okay, motion entering into a cooperation grant with Mayfield Borough. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oter... Yeah, Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero one four three?
This is entering into a cooperative agreement with Archibald Borough. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorize into into a cooperative agreement with Borough of Archibald for the Joy Street Stormwater Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County does hereby award the following block grant for the Borough of Archibald for this project, general construction for Rock Bottom Construction, to lowest and most responsible qualified bidder, not to exceed forty three thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. And again, Mr. Kelly will be happy to answer any questions and explain this agreement.
Again, this is a CDBG project, and in addition to the award of the contract, it's also the cooperation agreement, which we had in the last resolution in this one. That protects the county that if there's any overruns or any issues with the funding of the money, that the municipality is liable and responsible for those funds.
That's good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a cooperation agreement with Archibald Borough. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero one four four?
Authorizing the submission of community development block grant modifications. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna hereby authorize the submission for modifications. Lackawanna County Community Development Program, Economic Development, Troop Borough, Federal Fiscal Year, Community Block Grant Program modification will transfer fifty two thousand five dollars out of the water sewer improvement projects, and Troop and be used to create rehab single unit line item. Clark Summit Borough, Federal Fiscal Year, two thousand and fourteen, this modification will transfer thirty two thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars from Depot Street to the Senior Center Boiler Reconstruction Project in the Clark Summit Borough, Federal Fiscal Year, two thousand and fifteen, modification will transfer fifty five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Depot Street Improvement Project to be used to fund the Senior Center Boiler Reconstruction Project. Mr. Kelly is here again to explain these agreements and modifications to the board at this time.
The resolution in front of you today is to take care of some housekeeping and accounting for our community development block grant project. The municipalities, they have the ability to pick what projects they want to do. The first one in Troop Pearl Street did not qualify in terms of meeting a national objective, so therefore, they had to find another project that met the requirements of HUD. Therefore, they're putting it into a rehab project. The second two movements of funds is the Depot Street project at Clark Summit. There was money left over after the project was complete, and the municipalities decided to help the senior center with the boiler.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, authorize a submission for CDBG modification. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Roll call.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, George. Seventeen dash zero one four five?
Accepting a quote from CINTAS. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the quote from CINTA First Aid and Safety for the Department of Lackawanna County Departments of Recreation for AED Machines, monthly serving for McDade, Ailsworth, Covington, and Merly Sinowski Parks, to cost seventy nine dollars a month for three years. And Mr. Bill Davis, our Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, is here to explain the agreement and answer any questions the board might have.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Bill.
A few years ago, the park system, we had bought four of these AED units for the parks. But once you buy them, they have to be serviced every so often. And now these units needed to be serviced. So myself and Kevin Mitchell, the Budget Director, started looking at other programs on how to service these and also expand the program, because really having one unit per park would not be adequate if there was ever an emergency, just because of the location of our facilities and especially three of our parks being in rural areas. If anybody had an issue, it would be very serious, and it would take time to get emergency responders there. So we came up with a list to add additional AEDs and first aid kits to better serve the public and make sure, especially when they're using these facilities, that they're safe and we can also help them if there's an emergency. We can cover this within our current operating budget, and we will address it moving forward. I think it's a good program, especially adding an element of safety for the public using our facilities.
The AED system, like I said, if you're up at Merly, you know, I mean, you need one down at the lake, you need one on the office. It's a far distance between us. So no, I think this is great, and we'll have new first aid kits to make sure everybody that's... If there's an issue that comes up, we have the proper stuff to be able to help the citizens.
And I should have mentioned this earlier, that in the past, when we would buy a first aid kit, it wasn't being serviced once we purchased it. So after a few uses, unless we went and bought the stuff to refill it and knew what we had to refill it, well, when they service the AEDs on a monthly basis, they'll check the first aid kits so that they'll be always up to date and ready to use at any given time, so.
They'll keep everyone safe in the parks, especially we're starting the big season. We're starting with the pools opening, Memorial Day, so it'll make everybody safer when they're in the four parks. Good. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Did you... Is this the only company that you looked at for... Are they the only one in the area that does this?
I believe so, that offers this service. Also, if you look, we're purchasing the first aid kits through U.S. Communities, which is a state contract program, so we're guaranteed the lowest price on that.
Okay, does the board have any other questions for Mr. Davis? I'd like to make a motion accepting the quote for CINTAS. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Bill. Seventeen dash zero one four six?
Accepting a proposal for unified case management. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the proposal from the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania for Unified Case Management System to replace the standalone systems, unify the court system workflow, all processing through the District Attorney's Office, probation department, and prison. Three-phase project, costs the county approximately eighty-three thousand three hundred dollars. Mr. Jeff Mando, our Director of our IT Department, is here to explain this, as is Mr. Frank Castellano, the Court Administrator, if there are any questions as it relates to the courts.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. Mando.
This project attends to the replacement of three core applications that the county currently uses as a course court case management solution. Each of the current applications are independent of one another, causing communication productivity bottlenecks throughout the entire court processing system. This new solution in front of you today will unify this approach by presenting one application used in real time throughout the entire court system. This Unified Case Management System, or UCM, will be a catalyst to the Lackawanna County Court System. It will improve communications and free up bottlenecks in the system by presenting application-based workflow management and eliminating the three core standalone applications used today in adult probation, District Attorney's Office, and the prison. The project total cost will be for year one, it'll be one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. However, we have a forty-five thousand dollar grant. It's a non-competitive grant, so it should be going through. That would actually reduce the cost to one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents for year one, and the reoccurring cost of this year after year one reoccurring would be thirty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine six. Existing systems, reoccurring maintenance and support in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars will be freed up in the county budget following this project. We move to this project, and we eliminate the existing maintenance on the old systems as well as the database system that gets freed up. This project will also generate around twelve thousand dollars a year in revenue with adult probation portal access fees. And with this new approach, UCM will incur cost savings due to improved workflow throughout the entire system, offsetting the most reoccurring cost of this project. Without this project and with the failing adult probation standalone system that we currently have, we would need to spend in excess of a hundred thousand dollars for a replacement application for them anyway. If we were to do that, the entire system would still be all on the separate systems. UCM is the best choice for Lackawanna County, and I make a recommendation to you today to approve moving forward with this project.
Thank you, Jeff. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Mando?
I just... I have some questions. Jeff, you're saying this can also help us with cost savings with inmate holding?
Absolutely, yes.
So currently, you said sixty-one dollars a day. Is that what we'd be saving, or is that what we get?
Well, it's an internal number that they use. It's around sixty-five dollars a day for withholding. This number's subjective, though. What it does is it'll increase the workflow internally to create... Obviously, if individuals go through the system faster, the withholding would be reduced substantially with this program as it is today, as opposed to what it is today.
Because I remember, and I had discussed this in our work session, that we had hired someone to work in the prison to help us with that issue, but this is going to do even more, I'm assuming?
Yes, this is an all-on approach to the entire system, not just one individual department. Also, that position, I believe, after I researched it, was a replacement to an existing position that was open, and I believe their duties are also within the prison and not specifically for this improvement.
Okay. And a hundred thousand dollars for replacement of all of our old equipment, because we don't have any...
Just one, just one department, adult probation.
Adult probation.
Years ago, their support was stopped unexpectedly. It's an end-of-life system. It's basically on its last legs. If we were to not move forward with this and to have to replace that anyway, it's gonna cost in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, plus maintenance fees reoccurring. So it would be more sensible to use this application, which is a full-on approach, as opposed to just isolating one silo, one silo application and just piecemealing it together, as we've been doing.
Right, and I agree with that. I think the public just totally understand what you're doing here. You know, but what's kind of distressing to me is that we currently have a system that is at end-of-life, and there's no way to fix it if it breaks, correct?
Well...
That's what you had talked about in the meeting.
Not necessarily. What we do is, obviously, we get the best solution for our county for any applications that we look at, and we get the most out of those applications. For this particular instance, the... Just the adult probation model of this, that's standalone, it was... It's actually past its dew. It's time to replace it anyway. So logically, as we're moving with this application, it's more logical to look at the big picture than just piecemealing it one by one, which we've been accustomed to in the past.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Oteriani? I understand it.
This UCM system came out of a lot of committee meetings last summer, and it puts the prison, probation, and the courts on the same page. So when they're... They have an inmate or someone, whoever their individual's name is, they will see what probation is up to, they'll see what the courts is up to, they'll see what the jails up to. It'll expedite them getting in on a prison, it'll expedite them for bail, it'll expedite them for all different other situations that can occur along the way. It's just efficient, it's effective. Probation's at the end of life on their equipment, you know, technology doesn't last this long today, and I think that system's very old. It's fifteen years old or older.
Yeah, about fifteen.
So it's time. So I think that this is a great opportunity for us to give over these antiquated systems.
This is a great project that's gonna fix a lot.
And I'm telling you, the truth that matters, like, probation might not know what the prison was doing, courts might not know what probation's doing, prison might not know what... So this will put everybody on the same page, and I think it's gonna be very, very helpful.
C cap is sponsoring it, so it should be a good program.
They've done a lot of research on this. C cap is very good with this, and they've spent a lot of time developing this and listening to counties' needs.
And we vetted this last summer for, what, about twenty, fifteen meetings at least?
This is about two years in the process.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion accepting the proposal of unified case management system. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Seventeen dash zero one four seven.
Commissioners, this is entering into an indemnification agreement. We resolve the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County to hereby enter into an indemnification agreement with Montage Mountain Resorts for the county to install and maintain broadband equipment, and Mr. Mando, our Director of IT, is here. But prior to Mr. Mando speaking, I'd also like to point out to you, when we were at the Election Bureau last night, we had the opportunity to talk to the folks that were running the Emergency Command Center, and they were very excited about the proposition of this happening. They said when this new device is installed up on the mountain, it would approve communications clearly for them while they were back throughout the Election Bureau in the event of some kind of an emergency, and we had a shutdown in our building, they could have run the entire Election Bureau right out of this command center if this broadband was up and operating functionally at the time. So I wanted to point that out to you so you'd consider that in your deliberations also. Mr. Mando, I'm sure you have some other items to add to it, too?
Yes, sir. During the concert season and any other event taking place at Montage, our Sheriff's Department and Emergency Services works to provide security and public safety to those events. The Sheriff's Department has a trailer and 911 brings their mobile command unit to be used as mobile processing centers. In order for both of those stations to communicate and utilize the computer applications provided by Lackawanna County, they need access to our network domain. Lackawanna County utilizes its wireless network to make these connections. However, these connections need a line of sight to one of our many tower locations. The locations that these two stations are at has very poor line of sight. So in order to make a good connection, we asked Montage if we could utilize a zip line structure atop of one of the mountains, and they agreed, except they needed to, they needed a hold harmless to exempt themselves in case the radio loses connection so that we don't have to blame Montage. In my opinion, this is acceptable as the radio has nothing to do with Montage itself but the public safety of the people that are actually at the events that our Sheriff's and 911 Center is serving. We already have the radio in hand that's being placed and the install covered with wireless revenue through cost, but it would be small anyway for the install of that.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Mando? Go ahead.
Andy, what did you just say, that the 911 Center said what?
They had the Emergency Command Center at the Bureau of Elections.
The, the...
Correct.
Port...
And it would operate much more functionally if they had the line of command because it would also affect them there at the base of Montage.
That is its own, isn't the, isn't the mobile unit, from what I understand, its own center? We can actually utilize that if power goes out up at 911, is that...
That is the case, but it, it actually utilizes our network throughout the county in this particular instance.
Let me just stop you there, Jeff. What Andy just said is that if power goes out up at 911, that this...
No, I said at Stafford Avenue, if there was a problem, they had a better communication coming off the mountain from the center standpoint up there to control down to there, to have a direct line of communication.
Control what? The mobile, mobile unit?
Correct, that's Commissioner O'Malley.
No, the mobile unit is, like Jeff said, its own command center, correct?
It utilizes the network that it's going to utilize up at Montage only in different locations.
But if, stop now, hang on, I'm talking about the 911 Center. So if the 911 Center goes down, our mobile unit can handle calls from 911, is what you've explained to me in the past.
Theoretically, it can, yes.
So then why would this have any effect on our mobile unit, is like Andy's saying?
Well, if the mobile unit doesn't have access to our network, which it needs to communicate, the, the equipment inside needs to communicate, if it doesn't have that, it's not functional. It doesn't work.
Have it from where? If the 911 Center's down and the mobile unit can take over for that 911 Center, what are you talking about? They're already the 911 Center. They already have the capability. It's its own unit.
It has its capability, but it needs this network to communicate.
With who?
Otherwise, it's worthless.
With who?
With our network, the wireless network.
That's the wireless network?
Yes.
Yeah. That's not 911. That's not, because the mobile unit can take over for our 911 Center at any given time if there's power out up there.
911 relies solely on our wireless network. If the mobile command unit is up at Montage and we don't have line of sight to one of our towers that needs, that it needs to do its job inside, then it's out of business. It's worthless to have it up there if it doesn't have the bandwidth or the broadband connection to do its work inside.
Why do we have that mobile unit there onsite at Montage?
For any incidents to protect the citizens at events.
How does that protect our, how does a mobile unit protect our citizens?
What if somebody had a heart attack or something in there and they needed to get service out really quick? 911 is already there and already attending to sending an ambulance or having the ambulance available to take care of that individual.
Are you saying that they don't have the ability to call our 911 from, that nobody can call 911 for Montage?
Well, anybody could call 911.
Commissioner, this isn't about whether we're going to, they're going to do it or not. This is just holding Montage not responsible if there should be an issue. This isn't, it's...
But this is to hold them, hold us, hold them not responsible for us expanding our Wi-Fi program onto one of their towers is what it's about.
But we're not...
It has nothing to do with 911. And, and I, you know, I'm tired of hearing how the Wi-Fi system is somehow an issue of public safety. I spoke to our sheriffs. I spoke to Sheriff Mark McAndrew. I asked him for the entire process because when I spoke to you, Jeff, you had said that it's, you don't want to have, the whole purpose of this and the end result of our conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, was that you wanted to save the sheriff's time from having to come down here to the courthouse to process anyone they arrested because of an application, correct?
I believe they used the PRS system, and I don't know their exact process, and I did state that as well.
Right.
What I did state was I was approached to have a solution to fix a problem.
What problem, though?
And this is the problem.
What problem? About them coming to the processing center?
And this is the solution to that problem. It's to give them the service that they need up on top of Montage Mountain for them to do their jobs.
To do what job, though? That's what I'm asking you. What exactly do they need this for?
This is if, now, we're talking about, we're over actually in the ski resort section because that's where it's going to be. It's going to be actually on their, their towers, or whatever you like to call them. This is when we have the big concerts. If somebody gets hurt up on the top, something like that, this is going to give them an opportunity to be able to have quicker contact.
Quicker con, that's what, that's what, with who, 911?
911 puts their mobile command unit up there.
That's what I'm saying.
They put it up there for a reason.
We have our mobile unit there.
But the line itself.
If the mobile command unit is up there and it doesn't have the connectivity that it needs...
You need that line there for them to have the...
For who to have contact, is my question.
I stated that.
The sheriffs?
For the public safety, for 911 mobile command unit and for the sheriff's station that's up at 911.
The sheriff's station, okay? You're saying they need connectivity to Wi-Fi. For what purpose do they need it, is my question to you?
It's, it's for them to use the applications on hand rather than having to come downtown to do the processing and take away from sheriffs that should be up there securing the area.
That's what you told me, correct? That's what I'm getting to. I spoke to the sheriff, and first of all, Scranton has their own system and they have the top of the mountain. Music has, has the bottom of the mountain, and our sheriffs only patrol the parking lot in areas that are required by the county because we don't own Montage, okay? So we're only looking at incidents that occur on county, in the county region of parking lots, okay? It's rare for our sheriffs to bring anybody down from the mountain because we have police departments there already. Also, the process of the sheriff when he's arresting someone, if, God forbid, they do have to do it, they have to bring them to the processing center at Central Court anyway, regardless. They have to because they cannot leave until their blood alcohol level is zero point eight. So unless they have a ride home, they have to sit in Central Court, plus they have to have an arraignment, and that's another reason they have to bring them down because they get arraigned. Now, John, if I'm wrong in this, please correct me, but the magistrate on call will then decide whether to let them go or they get a jail sentence, correct? Correct? Or bail, right? So they have to leave Montage to come down here. So that, that one is gone off the table. So then the next one is who needs the connectivity, is my question? Because what you're telling me is we're kicking Verizon off the tower so that we can take over because you don't want to have to pay a forty-dollar air card to Verizon.
Not entirely accurate.
For us, it is. I mean, they could service other people, but not us.
There is, there is a tentative solution that they've been using, and it's not beneficial to them because of the poor connectivity that they get up on Montage utilizing mobile hotspots, which are the MiFi units that, in our situation, Verizon Wireless funds. They, they serve us.
I just don't understand who's having the problem with connectivity because I've questioned the sheriffs and nobody seems to...
I was specifically asked by the sheriffs and by, by 911 Center to come up with a solution for this so that they could do their jobs better.
The Sheriff's Department has no idea what I'm talking about when I said that to them. I spoke to Sheriff McAndrew. He said he has absolutely no problems with connectivity. It has nothing to do with what they're doing. They have a holding center. They have to bring them down. They do, they have to bring them down for fingerprinting to our processing center and the arraignment. There's a three-hundred-dollar fee due. You know, I, I don't know who it is that you're talking about that needs this connection. And when you tell me that it's going to get rid of Verizon's charge of forty dollars a month, is that what it's costing right now for an air card?
Yes.
Okay, so we no longer have to pay that because we'll have our own broadband there to send out a signal, correct?
Yes.
To anybody in that community? Would a business be able to hook onto that?
No.
I was told that three years ago, they wouldn't be able to hear either, but they are, so...
This is solely for the purpose of giving them the connectivity so that they could do their jobs.
Who are we giving the connectivity to?
I...
911 Center?
The Sheriff's Department and the 911 Center.
The Sheriff's Department, what does the Sheriff's Department need this connectivity for?
They're the ones that approached me on it.
So tell me what they need it for.
They have an application called PRS. They have a processing. They deal with emails and everything within, within the, within their job duties. There's, there's a whole list, but I'm not, I didn't talk to them about exactly what their duties are. They came to me with a problem. I'm providing a solution.
Well, I don't understand why they're coming to you, but I'm hearing from Sheriff Mark McAndrew that there is no issue with that connection of anything.
I was approached on this.
I, I believe you. I just wish you would have brought them in and had them speak to let us know what exactly they're looking for because the process that was described to me and Sheriff, he's in court today, so he couldn't make it here, but he's got the whole entire procedure that he's bringing over to my office, and I'll go through that, and I'm not seeing why we need a Wi-Fi there if we have, we actually have a mobile unit there already. So that unit...
It needs better service.
That unit takes the place of 911, correct? Why are they there?
They're there to serve the community up there. They're always at events. They go to events.
They're there to make, they're there to make, it's very simple. They're there to make it safer for the citizens that are at the concerts.
I, I just want to know where the safety comes from.
Dave Han asked for this?
About a year ago, he did, yes.
Okay. Did the Sheriff's Department say this is something that's going to make them more efficient when they have to, if they have a call or they have to do a problem?
Absolutely.
Well, I just, there's no, there's, they have their radios. If they need to get in touch with Scranton, they have to change channels on their, their handheld units, which work.
That's radios that's separate than what they would use this for.
Right. So what would they be used? That's what my question is. If they have a radio that they can get in contact with any police department in the whole entire area, 911, on their handheld radios, just by changing a channel, then what exactly are we trying to look for in connectivity? What, what are we trying to connect? That's all I'm asking.
You said already, it's the application for different things that they want to be able to...
There isn't, but according to the sheriff, there isn't anything that they need in regards to processing anyone.
Dave Han is on, is on staff usually for most of these events. Did he say that that would make the mobile unit more efficient for whatever they would might need to do if they had communication issues?
Yes, and it's, it's the last...
Dave Han asked for something? Dave Han does a great job of 911 Center, and if it's a matter of a wire being hooked up up there and us just approving that, we're not going to be fighting with Montage Mountain about it? You know, it's...
Jeff, I don't know if...
We don't own Montage.
When Jeffrey explained, when Jeffrey explained this to me...
We don't have an issue with them if we put this up.
Jeff, during, during a concert on the top of the mountain, there are people located in all different sections. If they want to communicate from the top of the mountain down to the parking lot, the way that it was explained to me is the communication would be much clearer if this device was placed on the, on the lineup there. They'd have a clear line of communication from the top of the mountain where the thousands of people were down to the command center on the base of the mountain. That's the way you explained it to me.
But that's one of the safety issues, right?
It was a public safety issue. I don't...
But that's fine, but that connection still exists under Verizon, Andy, is what he's...
But they, they said it's not working, and they're not, they're not having...
It's not working as well as it's...
The way they explained it to me, Commissioner Cummings...
It's slow.
It was like having two old walkie-talkie radios. Sometimes they work and sometimes they don't, and they had a...
But that's not, that's not the case because I talked to the sheriffs.
This is the way they explained it to me. There was a fuzzy communication. This would be a clear line of communication. It really wasn't going to cost us anything. There was a small device that was going to be placed on one of the top zip lines, and all Montage was saying if something happens to this, they don't want to be held responsible, which I can understand. They're, they're a private corporation, they're just allowing us to place it on the zip line. But that's the way it was explained to me. That's the reason I authorized you to put it onto the agenda. It seems like it's, it's becoming much more complicated than the process which was explained. This was, explained to us that we needed this as a public safety issue to put it on, but you're explaining much more than that right now, Jeff. I don't, I don't know what, what are the, what the collaborative issues are that you're going into right now. That isn't really what you told us it was about.
But it was in addition to what we talked about with this.
Right.
Let's just bring it to a vote. You hear what I mean? It is what it is.
I, I respect what Commissioner Cummings is asking, but those issues were not asked or raised with anything about the sheriffs or the other departments. What we said, this was a device that was going to...
This was, I asked him, I...
Well, he didn't explain it to us at the...
The reality of this is very simple. Anyone who's been up there at any one of these concerts, especially the ones that are three-day ones, you'll see that there's people up almost at the very, very top of the mountain. If this is going to make it that they're going to be able to get in contact faster so they're safe, there's an issue, then I'm all for it, and I have no problem with the fact.
It isn't.
Doesn't it help to make, make, be able to contact, to be able to make phone calls and be able to get...
That, that would be with an LMR, Land Mobile Radio antenna on top of the radio that's going on there, yes.
Okay.
That would make an improvement.
Okay.
Added to that is also the connectivity to what they need for their, their vehicles in the, in the center.[1610.33]
And Dave Han asking on top of it, roll call. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Johnny? Commissioner Cummings.
No.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
And it has nothing to do with me not wanting public safety. None of this makes. I've spoken to everybody involved, and nobody can give me an answer as to what exactly is going to be made safer by providing this. Nobody, including what he just said up there. I don't know what's going to be. How is it going to make the public safer? I haven't gotten the answer to that.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Justine, 500 Vine Street, Scranton Public Library. I'm well. How are you? Well, you know, I'm here with the party news. So, May 26th, Friday, from 5:00 to 8:00, we'll be celebrating our 8th Annual Swingin' on Vine Block Party. This is a fundraiser for the Scranton Public Library. All proceeds benefit our programs and services for our 240-plus, 214,000, over 200,000 residents of Lackawanna County. We shut down the 500 block of Vine Street right near Lackawanna College, and we have live music and dancing, raffles and food from restaurants all over the area. Tickets are $15 in advance and 20 at the door, and it gets you three hours of food and drink and dance and fun and library love, and you're all invited, and you're invited at home. Please come, party with the library, show your library love, and it's all for a good cause.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I brought some flyers. Can I leave these with you? Thank you. Ooh, fun feature this year. Tara Michelle will be our featured vocalist with Paul Lebel and the Exact Change. Tara Michelle has performed with John Legend, Lauryn Hill, so she's going to be our special guest this year. I will be looking for all of your faces. And thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
See, we're representing Joan and I. Dynamic duo here.
All right, Joan. Joan's ready. Sure stuff.
Joan Haudewann at Scranton. Thank you for the honor of leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
And also, I was so proud to see Joe Sylvester honored. Fran called me earlier this week for a little information about my time in the Army, and I told her of all the awards I ever got. I'm most proud of the Good Conduct Medal because it's only given to enlisted personnel, and I was enlisted before I became an officer. And I will tell you very honestly that there are a whole lot of officers who cannot cut the mustard if they were enlisted. So, what Joe Sylvester accomplished in his career of 43 years and to retire at the rank of E8 Master Sergeant, that's quite an accomplishment. And those of us who've ever worn the uniform know what I'm talking about. If you haven't worn the uniform, I'm sorry. Speaking of patriotism, I was listening to the radio earlier this morning, and I don't know if these figures are correct, but it was stated that in Lackawanna County, 39,158 people voted. Out of 128,000 registered voters, that's like 30%. And I've been in countries in Europe and in the Middle East where a 70% or 80% turnout was a national embarrassment. So, if a third-world country can turn up the vote, why can't we? And I keep telling people, you get what you pay for. And if you don't have enough time and energy to get out and vote, shame on you, and I hope you get what you deserve. With regard to this option agreement for Rika Property Holdings and President Judge Beresas' comments, I'm not familiar really with the project that they're going, trying to get the building next to the jail, but I got to tell you this. I was a victim of a robbery in 2015. The robber was eventually caught and had several appearances in Central Court at the courthouse. And I attended as the victim because the man had to make restitution to me. And it was extremely embarrassing to be sitting in the little seating area. You know, I was like the only victim in a group of multiple perpetrators. And I wanted to put a sign on my chest saying victim, not perp. So, please, you know, I mean, he has some valid points where, you know, it's not a lot of fun, you know, to be tending Central Court, you know, as the victim because you want your interests represented, and there's no privacy for you. When somebody from the DA's office comes to talk to you before the session begins, they have to sneak you out into the hallway so you can whisper to each other, you know, want to be talking in front of the guy that robbed you, you know, kind of thing. It just made no sense to me. So, I hope that they do get the building eventually, and I do hope that they're able to segregate, you know, those who are witnesses and victims from people who are defendants because I just don't think the situation we have in the courthouse right now is workable or right. It's not appropriate. Didn't pay taxes, have to sit there. You know, I go to city council, and the reporter who transcribes the proceedings, she's also a court reporter. She walked in one day when I was there for a court session. She says, "What did you do?" And I'm going, "No, no, I'm the victim," you know. But it's a little embarrassing. Having said that, I too encourage everybody to go Swingin' on Vine, May 26th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., at Albright Memorial Library. What she didn't have a chance to tell you is, it doesn't matter whether it's raining or there's a tornado that comes through the downtown. We'll have tents. We have a lot of the tables and basket raffles are actually indoors on the first floor of the library. That's where all the chocolate is, okay? Usually have two ambulances for anybody who goes into a sugar coma. It's wonderful. I mean, it's great. The raffle baskets are fantastic. I think they have the students from Lackawanna College, you know, serving the food and dishing it up and everything else. It's great. Lot of businesses donate food. It's 21 and over. So, if you're not 21, don't even come around, okay, because there will be alcohol. There'll be wine, and there'll be beer. But it's a fun time, a lot of music, a lot of dancing. Come in and see the beautiful library that you have in Scranton. It is gorgeous, okay? And it's a historical gem. And speaking of the libraries, now that we've gotten 26th of May out of the way, I want to let you know that our next book sale's coming up for the Friends of the Scranton Public Library from Tuesday, June 6th through Sunday, June 11th. We'll be on the second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of Crunch. We sell books, DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, for anything for $1 to $2. Actually, we'll sell you children's books for as little as 25 cents. We take checks, not checks. We take credit cards. We take cash. You know, if you come on Sunday, you can buy a tote bag for $5, and all the books and everything you stuff in there is free. So, please come. This is a win-win. I know that you came last time. You bought two bags worth of books. Was it worth it?
Yes.
Did you get a bargain?
Absolutely.
I know that you were there, Lorene.
Absolutely.
Okay. Jerry?
I'll be there later.
You'll be there, okay?
I won't be here for Armed Forces.
That's fine.
My daughter's graduating.
I won't be there for that one, Joan. I'm on vacation, so.
Okay. Well, we'll be thinking of it.
Joan, I'll see you.
There'll be one in September. We'll have your name down for no vacations in September. But this is a win-win for the library and for the people who buy these books. You get a real bargain, okay? And please come out and support Armed Forces Day Parade on Saturday.
Absolutely.
You know, it's pathetic to see these people, you know, these units come out and have to march. You know, sometimes they march in the rain, and there's no one there to clap for them. And it's not just the veterans standing on the sidelines. It's the people marching in the parade. They've taken a lot of time to do this for us, and hey, like I said, you get what you pay for.
Thanks, Joan. Joan, you want to get that flyer over to Fran? We'll put it on each one of the floors so people will know this is going on. Okay.
Hello, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a hand here if you understand.
Thank you.
Mike Katton's there, 132 School Street, Childs, PA. Commissioners, I'll try and be brief. I know everybody had a long day yesterday with the elections, and you have meetings after this. I come here today to speak about an insidious little tax within Governor Wolf's proposed 2018 budget that will have deuterious consequences for our county. This is a proposed 6% tax on all the revenues from both dry and cold third-party logistics warehousing services. The language in this bill also, although nebulous, may even extend to the trucks that are under docks. The reason I'm bringing this up is because we have a lot of warehousing located within our county. A prime example of this would be the Stofler Industrial Park, which houses businesses such as Kane, UPS, Dome of Grass, Chefs, and several others. These businesses employ thousands of people. They support thousands of families, and they produce millions of dollars in tax revenues for the localities, the county, and the state. Most of these businesses, these warehousing businesses operate on a 4% to 6% margin. And the way their contracts are structured would not allow them to pass on these added expenses to their customers. This will result in these businesses operating at either a loss or a negative cash flow, thereby effectively putting them out of business. Pennsylvania has proposed this tax before but did not pass it. I believe it was proposed during the Rendell administration. And because of this, many of these warehousing operations within our state have already established operations in neighboring states and would move the entirety of their operations and customers to these locations instead of incurring this additional expense to their business. Attached with my comments that I gave to you, Commissioners, I attached a map showing where, you know, some of these major warehousing businesses are in our state. And if you look at the map, you could easily see how they could move their operations to neighboring states without a problem. Other states that have enacted this warehouse, these warehouse taxes have repealed them because they generated less tax revenue, not more. A Michigan State University study showed if the state of Michigan enacted this tax, which they were thinking about, it will result in a 33% labor loss for the industry in just a few years. Also, a KPMG study, large accounting firm, Finances, showed that most states that, most states have abandoned commercial storage taxes because they translate into an actual loss of tax revenues, a loss of economic activity, a loss of population, and a loss of income and sales taxes. The communities in which this occurs often end up with a large warehouse buildings that are not leasable, creating real estate tax issues and tax issues for schools and localities. And this only adds to economic blight when these warehouses go empty. I firmly believe for Lackawanna County, the enactment of this warehouse tax by our state will result in our county losing our warehousing operations, losing thousands of jobs that support our citizens and families, losing the ancillary businesses that support these operations, losing millions of dollars in tax revenues, loss of property values due to economic blight, and loss of tax revenues for localities and the school districts. Please remember that capital and investment only goes where it's appreciated, not to places where it is under constant siege. I'm asking the county commissioners to write a letter to Governor Wolf explaining the disastrous effects this warehousing tax will have on the county. I ask this because this administration has shown, both by action and by deed, that they're advocates for jobs and businesses in our county. I also believe that a letter coming from county government would carry much more weight than a letter coming from a private citizen. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them as best I can, or else, you know, that's all I have to say. No questions?
Thanks for bringing it up, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Commissioner Cummings?
To the library, thank you so much for always coming in here and being pleasant and for calming things down because it does get heated up here once in a while. But I appreciate your positive attitudes, no matter what's happening in our meeting, so.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for both of you.
So many books sold at all times.
Joan, I appreciate your commentary, and I understand what you're saying. And I do understand a lot of the issues that Judge Beresas is talking about, and I would love to support the project for him because I was initially on board with that. But, you know, after reviewing everything and the fact that we purchased another building, the cost associated with the new purchase, I think is unreasonable, what they want for that building, for one. And we would have to renovate, and we don't even know where the costs would go for renovations on that. So, I'm just worried about our budget, that's all. I'm constantly trying to think of, you know, where we could save money. I'm trying to give the taxpayers a tax break. I'm trying to convince my fellow commissioners to cut some things so we can cut the taxes, you know. And we're always, all three of us are always looking at areas to do that. So, it just makes me a little bit uneasy to have two building projects at the same time going on. And that's my concern with that. But like I said in my statement, I would be happy to revisit that, and I didn't give a yay or nay to that for that reason. I also would like, I did not know all that about you in regards to your service to our country, and I am so proud to know you. I am so proud of you. And I thank you, and I hope that everyone would give her the ovation that she did not get on recognition because she so eloquently gave us the Pledge of Allegiance. So, at this time, I would ask that we give her that recognition for her service. Thank you. Thank you, Joan. Mike, I appreciate you bringing the tax issues to us in regards to Governor Wolf's budget, and I'm glad to see that I'm not the only one reading budgets from our governor these days. So, thank you for your work on that. I had a request from Kyle Wind in regards to some of the votes I've been having and why I vote no on certain things, and it's a legitimate question. So, it started with the bike study. And these bike studies, the Scranton Times chose to put in a comment. That was at the end of my dissertation of how our budget has been decimated at the state level and possibly going to be at the federal level, which they chose not to report, that I said. So, anyway, that's my concern. And one of the issues I brought up is from CCAP. Now, I just got a report from CCAP in regards to some of the problems that our counties across our state could face with the change in the budgets. They're having problems with State Sentencing Commission, juvenile probation, adult probation services could be affected, intermediate punishment treatment programs, county court reimbursements, senior judge reimbursements, court interpreter county grants, mental health base, behavioral health services, which includes funding that can support treatment costs for substance abuse individuals critical in addressing the opioid crisis, which I have embarked on a task force at this county level, along with my fellow commissioners, human services development. Ultimately, this will impact other systems at the county level in the way in which individuals and families can be served and create additional pressures on local property tax dollars. We're right in the middle of an argument about reassessment, and we're looking at a budget that's not completed, and we have no idea what's going to be cut. And these are the areas that CCAP themselves are telling us maybe what's happening at the state level. Homeless assistance, reduction of this line item, which also saw a 10% decrease in fiscal 2012, 2013, will result in reduced payments to counties and affect the availability of safe, accessible, affordable housing needed for successful reentry to communities from the criminal justice system. Local government commission in regards to how we pay some of our senior judges, that's going to be affected. And if the state doesn't reimburse, we might have to do that at the county level for senior judges. So, there's multiple areas that I'm reading about in regards to state and federal funding that we have to be concerned about at the county level. And that's why I'm concerned with our budget and what we're spending our money on, and that's why I look at everything that we're spending our money on. And, you know, it has, my opinion truly means nothing as an individual and as a commissioner. What I represent, though, does. And I hear all the time that, you know, who cares what Commissioner Cummings has to say? She's supposed to represent all the taxpayers. Well, I'm a part of that all, the taxpayers, and there are people just like me, whether others don't want to admit that or not, and who have the same exact beliefs that I have and are looking at their parents losing their homes or them themselves losing a home in the county due to the taxes. And I'm constantly thinking of those people because, really, I'm one of those people. I own a home. I own property. I own a small business. I've suffered at the hands of local and state and federal government. I know the implications that it can result. And I don't ever want to see anybody else in my neighborhood go through that or anyone that I know. And that's why I ran for office. I truly believe that if you haven't gone through a situation that was caused by government, regardless of what level it was, you cannot possibly understand what it's like. And I do. I understand that. And, you know, I just, it makes me wonder, if you want all the people represented, well, I am part of all those people. And that comment is not even warranted because all the people means everyone, conservative, Democrat, Republican, liberal, libertarian, all the people is all the people. And that's what we three do. We compromise every single day. I mean, you saw it today on all the different issues that we vote on or don't vote on and who agrees with what. We compromise and get things done in this administration under Commissioner O'Malley's leadership and his vision. Now, we don't always agree, but we get things done that are good for the county. And that's what our job is, and we are supposed to, we're not supposed to agree on everything because that would be, you know, more of a monopolized rubber stamping, and we don't do that here. So, I'm proud of the work we do, and I think that there's always going to be areas that are difficult for me to vote for as the minority commissioner, but that's just the way it is. But I will always speak my mind and stand up for the people that I represent. And that is my job to represent them because they are the ones that elected me, people that stand for what I stand for. I didn't get as many votes as. I didn't get as many votes as my Democratic fellow commissioners because they have a different platform that they run on. We just saw one today that Commissioner O'Malley ran on that, that we all agreed on and that is to make sure that we hire people within the county. You know, I mean, those are the type of items that pass through, through our administration that everybody tends to agree with, things that, you know, I think everyone meets in our common sense approaches. So I appreciate you bringing that up. So that, that's what the answer is, Kyle. I'm just looking at budgets. It doesn't matter what the issue is, whether it's bike riding. I mean, you, your paper itself has this, which I finally thought a cartoon that you sent out was funny, with me on a cart in the back. I don't, I don't think that looks like me, but it's quite funny. Right underneath it, for the new cartoon caption, "We have a car on a road, I'll chew it up." I just came into work, coming into work this morning, got held up on Davis Street, yet another roadway. We have roads that are a mess and it's constantly in the paper, potholes, a rough road ahead. You see how bad and deplorable our roads are, but yet you condemn someone who's bringing it up and saying, "What about fixing the roads before you do a bike lane?" It's so contradictory to me. I, I don't see why you don't understand what I'm saying. You talk, look at, this is on the budget. There is a place where revenues end and the budget talks begin and deficits grow large and deep enough to make one lose all sleep and where officials squabble and fight or our dollars not there to spend. That's from your paper that just condemned me for not voting on a bike lane study, a study, not a bike lane, actual bike lane, but a study. But yet they recognize why I'm voting the way I am and then question me on why I'm voting the way I am. So that's my explanation to you and to your question. And I appreciate the question and the opportunity to answer it. So thanks for sending that to me. You all know, Commissioner O'Malley was in office when I was here, going against the Wi-Fi program. I do not support the Wi-Fi program. I don't think that county government should be in the business of providing internet services. I don't believe that it should ever happen that when we put any equipment on a tower to replace Verizon, that's a major issue for me. I'm a business owner. Now, I'm not saying Verizon is this great company or Comcast is a great company. What I'm saying is they're a private company and counties should not be in the business of removing their business so that we can better a county government program. And that's just what just happened now with this vote because we spend, now it's not a lot of money, $40 a month for an air card. And we no longer have to do that once we take over the airwaves on that tower. Now, I'm not a broadband expert, but I did do my due diligence. I called many people that work on computers. I understand line of sight. I called and spoke with our sheriff's department. I met with multiple sheriffs downstairs and throughout the building. When I see them, I talk to them. They have no reason for this. They, they don't have a problem with their radio communication. And when I discussed it with Mr. Mando, he said, "That's correct. That's not what the issue was." We have a mobile command unit. I'm not sure exactly. We don't own montage. And I just don't agree with, you know, making this Wi-Fi program any bigger than it already is. And that's just where I stand on it and I will never vote in favor of it. I want, I'm sorry, I have a couple of things. I don't want to miss them. In the past week, this past weekend was pretty rough for a couple areas in our county and one of them was an issue that I'm consistently talking about and an advocate for, and that's those that are affected by domestic violence. In the past week, I've received numerous calls on an alleged incident of domestic violence, which was allegedly perpetrated by a county employee. The matter was well-publicized in the local media and while I legally cannot and will not make any comment on the merits of any particular incident or the involvement of any particular person employed by the county, I can and must talk to the issue of domestic violence and the seriousness of, of an offense in that nature. I take this opportunity to publicly condemn domestic violence and express my unwavering support for any victims. And finally, I want to, I want to acknowledge that Lackawanna County, through the efforts of my fellow commissioners, Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Notariani have made the county a strong advocate and financial supporter for the Barbara Hart Justice Center in an effort to combat domestic violence. And I applaud those efforts and I hope they will continue in the future. And I just want to make sure that I address that because of the numerous calls that I received in regards to the situation that occurred this weekend. Last, but not least, on the opioid epidemic, this coming May 22nd at 6:30, we had, I'd spoken and addressed this at one of our meetings in Musick, our evening meetings, that we had joined in our efforts with Geisinger through the task force that I created to have seminar. They have a new program that, that they're launching and we're going to be, I'm going to be on the panel for that. It's called, "We've Had Enough, Have You?" That will be at Geisinger Commonwealth School of Medicine, located in the Medical Sciences Building Auditorium from 6:30 to 8:30, Monday, May 22nd. There'll be multiple medical staff on board and what I'm looking for in regards to the next phase of the task force is prevention. And that starts with personal responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, in the home setting. I think that parents and especially women serve a large role in that as caregivers for not only their children, but usually elderly parents and, not that men, I know that Commissioner Notariani does have some issues that he takes care of his mom, but, you know, I think that we serve a specific role in educating our children and our families in regards to questioning physicians and we get that, women get that special intuition in regards to their kids that I felt. I know that I have people that have felt the same in regards to when their children are going through a hard time. You just know. And it's not always a bad thing to question a doctor or a dentist and especially when currently they're under a predicament where they're stuck in the middle of a situation that they did not create and are getting blamed for. So I would hope that people would attend that and I'll have more, if you need any more information, you can give my office a call. And I hope that everything goes well for our veterans this weekend and I applaud and thank them for all their service. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine. Joan, yeah, your service is amazing. Thank you for coming in and doing the pledge and we really appreciate you being on the library board. You have a great impact on our community at large. I'd also just like to, I'd like to congratulate all the candidates, whether they won or lost. It's definitely not easy to run for office and it's, and it's tough to serve. It's not an easy job. You're under the magnifying glass all the time. And I'd just like to, hats off to, whether you won or lost, thank you for your effort for trying to make a difference in our great county. And to our citizens, please, you know, general elections just around the corner in November, come out and vote. You know, Memorial Day is reason enough that you should go and vote. All these, all of our great veterans that lost their lives to defend our freedoms, you mean, that's the first and foremost reason why we should go out and vote when you have an opportunity. We get to do it twice a year. Absolutely make it out for the general election in November. Lorraine hit upon the one issue that happened to one of our employees and I'd just like to say that no woman or child should ever fear their home and I totally believe in the Women's Resource Center, Peg Ruddy, the director, does a great job and that fear should just be, that should be gone at this point. It's 2017 and women shouldn't be, have fear of being beaten and children shouldn't have to fear their home either. Getting back to the property out on Wyoming Avenue, just really quick, this is six months for us to be able to vet the property, see if it's adequate for us to rehab it so we could be part of the county prison. We are landlocked out on New York and Washington Avenue and this could hopefully be a good opportunity for us. So we'll see over the next six months where that goes and financially what it'll take to actually make the property, make the, make the situation move forward. Saturday, May 20th, Armed Forces Parade, please. People that come out to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, please come out to the Armed Forces Parade. It's this Saturday, May 20th, 11 a.m. start downtown Scranton. Come out and honor our servicemen and women while they're marching through the streets of downtown Scranton. Also, Memorial Day, Monday, May 29th, make sure that if you have an opportunity, get out to one of our memorial services across Lackawanna County. There's many of them throughout the day, start 8 o'clock in the morning till like 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Please get out to honor our servicemen and women, especially those who lost their lives. You know, Memorial Day is about remembering those who are not here any longer that gave so much, especially our veterans for the freedoms that we just take for granted every day. It's about our veterans and those who lost their lives, it really is. Also, we're going to be having our Second Annual Senior Fun Day, which will be held on Friday, June 16th, 10 a.m., McDay Park. It's free for our seniors. There's going to be bingo, there's going to be mine tours, there's going to be refreshments, lots of fun. Please let us know if anybody'd like to come. We're trying to make sure we can get everyone up to McDay Park. Also, we're going to be having our Annual Job Fair Thursday, May 25th, and that's going to be 1 to 5 of a PNC field. Be dressed, be ready, because there's going to be some bosses of these different companies that are going there that might want to interview you on, on the spot. My grandmother used to say, "It's not the president, it's the wrapping." So make sure you're dressed for success that day. And last but not least, Saturday, May 27th, 5 p.m., Jessup, PA, St. Ubaldo Race for the Saints. What a great weekend. It's, it's all week long. They start on Wednesday with the carnival over on, I think it's on Fourth, Fourth Street and leading up to the race on, on Saturday and then Sunday, there's still festivities going on. It's just a great day to go out and enjoy the race. Come out and cheer around St. Ubaldo, St. George, St. Anthony. There's only two places in the whole world where this race can be seen, Gubio, Italy, or Jessup, PA. So please, come on out. It's a great religious and historical event. Bring your family, it's great family fun. And at this time, I'd just like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Notariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you very much and have a good night.